From Westside Baptist Church, deliver the message of education and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we just bow out for you tonight and thank you, Father, for a lovely day you've given us, Lord. Lord, another day to serve you, Lord, to please you. I pray tonight, Lord, as this meeting is conducted, I pray that, Father, your will be observed. I pray that you could give this council the wisdom and, Lord, not as, Lord, to carry out the business of the city, Lord, that it be in the best interest of Talisi. And, Lord, be you honored, glory, and pleasing to you. We ask you to pray these things in Jesus' precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
To the glory of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all.
And now the prayer of this meeting open for business on this day, November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty. Capsule in your packets, you'll find the minutes of a work session held on Tuesday, November the tenth, twenty-twenty. What's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Say it.
Have a motion in second. I'll say a favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. You guys have it. Counsel also, you'll find the minutes of a regular council meeting held on Tuesday, November the tenth, twenty-twenty. What's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion in second. I'll say a favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. You guys have it. I'm one on the agenda to discuss adding stop signs at intersections of Congo Street and North Asher's Avenue. I'll open up for discussion.
Uh, Mayor, that is my word and, uh, that's just, uh, the news about this, this four-way, this four-way stop just, you know, been, been put out there this week. And, uh, I was moved that we would table this until I can hear more from, from my constituents about how they feel about this. That's, that's my motion. We table it.
I don't think we need to vote. Just to table something and everybody to table that.
Yes.
Alright. Okay, item two on the agenda is Morgan Duckett. Alright, before you get started, uh, you've got three minutes to speak. Uh, you'll be timed, uh, Councilman Bill Hall right here. You can say anything you want to. Um, anyone that can address the council, as long as you go through the proper, uh, steps, which is to get with the city clerks on Wednesday by noon before the city council meeting. So the next city council meeting is December the eighth. If anyone out here wants to speak at December the eighth, all they have to do is email, uh, Whitney Pinchford, uh, what is it, cityclerk@?
Talisi-ale.gov.
Cityclerk@talisi-ale.gov and request a big vote on the agenda and you'll get thirty minutes. Uh, we're, we're not here to be cross-examined. You can say whatever you want to, as long as you don't use foul or vulgar language. Um, uh, we're not gonna take any comments from, from outside. If anyone gets unruly, we'll ask you nicely to leave. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Duckett.
Could I ask that Leslie, uh, go first? Is that okay?
Yeah, anyone have a problem with Leslie Ogborne? I have a three moving up top and two. Sure.
Thank you so much.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for staying with me this evening. My name is Leslie Ogborne. Um, I'm a representative for No Prisons for Talisi, which is a community organization we built together. I'm sure some of you are aware of it. Um, we even held an event recently which, um, attracted approximately a hundred to a hundred and fifty people. Um, the biggest issue that the community has right now with the council and the mayor is the lack of transparency with this matter. Um, Mayor Hammack has gone on the record stating that he has been dealing with CoreCivic since he first became in office and was required to sign a non-disclosure agreement. The community is unhappy with this turn of events because it prohibited him, who is supposed to work for us, the voters, from giving us information that we would have had a long time ago to state how we feel about this. And just like you stated, giving your constituents the time to talk about these stop signs, the entire community at Talisi should have been able to given a chance to speak about these matters years ago, even before Governor Ivey announced the prison coming here. We would like to know why the transparency, why the secrecy. If this is such an economic booster for Talisi, why did you not just come out and say, "You guys, you know, this might be on the table. I don't know if it's coming here, but I'm laying this out here. How do you guys feel about it?"
Ma'am, we've already said we're not answering questions.
I know. I, this is what, I'm just stating what the community feels. So, on the transparency.
Do you mean the community, can I ask you, do you mean the community in the city limits or in the county?
Both.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Hammack has stated more than once that he is trying to care for forty-five hundred people. That goes well beyond the voting population of Talisi. I am, however, one of the non-voting members of Talisi. I used to live within the city limits. However, transparency, it is not an attack on the council and it is not a personal attack on the mayor. These events should have been laid out for us by the city, by the council, by the commission, and by the state way before now. That is the predominant problem in this community and I think people lose sight of that and back and forth. But people are upset about that and there are ways that this council and the mayor can move forward and make it to where the city members understand what's going on. They understand why this is happening, how long it's been going on, and the problems that could come from having a privately funded for-profit prison in our small community. This is not a state prison and I'm sure if anybody restores CoreCivic, you can find all the corruptions. Yes, they may bring their Department of Corrections workers in here, but then they understaff and they cut pay and they renegotiate every single year. And they take the corruptness and the problems that are already in this Department of Corrections.
Okay, um, we'd like to call Morgan Duckett to the podium.
I've prepared my statements this evening. Good evening. Uh, thank you for having me. My name is Morgan Duckett. I'm a student at Auburn University and I grew up just, uh, still west in Hager County and Prattville specifically. Uh, I'm here because Mayor Hammack and the city council have betrayed the people of Talisi. The prison industrial complex, the term used to describe the overlapping interests of government and industry that use surveillance, policing, and imprisonment as a solution to economic, social, and political problems. The result of this overlap is mass incarceration. Today, Alabama imprisons its people at a higher rate, nearly one in one hundred, than the United States, which is point seven in a hundred, and almost ten times as much as the next democratic country, the United Kingdom, which is one in a thousand. The prison industrial complex is a crisis that has arrived in the United States, especially for four communities and communities of color since the early seventies. The way this crisis is perpetuated is through lobbying of state and local leaders by private companies such as CoreCivic, formerly Corrections Corporation of America. They had to rebrand due to associations of their name with human rights violation lawsuits. CoreCivic has been treating Mayor Hammack to dinners and gatherings since twenty-sixteen, many of which were paid for by the city of Talisi in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars. CoreCivic promises increased utility sales, which is about the only tangible benefit, in exchange for bodies and your integrity. Mayor Hammack found this exchange acceptable and quickly got appointed as superintendent of utilities, a raise that has since increased his pay by three hundred percent, from twenty-five K to seventy-five K, all at the time he's been talking to private prison companies. Prisons require inmates to be profitable. Mayor Hammack has directly contributed to prison industrial complex and it seems he's already got an idea of who he wants to fill those voids in his community. Sonny Spencer received that very threat from Mayor Hammack just before he was re-elected. August twenty-third, Mr. Hammack was arrested for harassment and according to testimony after his wife experienced a rotary death incident, he allegedly tracked down Mrs. Spencer, followed her, approached the car.
Sir, are you here to talk about the, wait, are you here to talk about the prison or are you just here to run down Mayor Hammack, sir?
Yeah, I would like to reclaim my time.
Three minutes.
I've got my time. August twenty-third, you were arrested. Your court date was set for October seventh. That's nearly two months. You posted bail, which means you didn't stay in prison. That's a pre-trial, uh, situation.
Prison for felony, that's a misdemeanor that I am allegedly charged with.
Right, but you would still be in prison for not posting them if you were, you would be put in a jail.
But I did post bail.
Okay, so, the, uh, he's directly with the knowledge that, uh, the prison that Spencer would go to would be the one he's so proudly building in this community and I find that revolting. The solutions to inhumane prison conditions do not lie in building massive prisons owned by a company known for their abusive conditions. It lies in incarceration reform, both in the pre-trial frames and sentencing. Mayor Hammack himself posted bail on August twenty-third and wanted Spencer in prison for harassment before his court date on October seventh. This is a luxury many can afford and is the reason seventy percent of Alabama's prison population consists of pre-trial victims. As the mayor and city council take a long, hard listen to this. You interrupted me while I was speaking.
Your time is up, sir.
Let me, let me address you just a minute. You said the key word, he is still. I hope you understand that the city of Talisi is not in the business of selecting prisons. We can't do that if we wanted to. This, this, this is a, I didn't interrupt you. This was done by, this was done by the governor's office, okay? By the governor's office. And so, him and the rest of the thing about the NDA and others, but he didn't bring the prison in here. And all this other stuff about what you just said about a personal attack, what's that got to do with this? We're talking about something that is coming to Talisi. We took the decision, if it comes, with the council. If it comes, if it doesn't come, that's fine. If it comes, yes, we'll take advantage of it economically where we can. Why would we not? You know, there's been an issue about we're gonna pay four, four million dollars to run infrastructure to this prison if it comes. No, we're not. The group has already agreed to pay for the structure. We're paying nothing, nothing. So when the interest, when the water starts running, the sewer starts working, the gas starts flowing, we're making profits. We're not having to come out of bonds and loans. It's been alleged, we're saying. So, none of that's true. But what you just said about him, I mean, what you were saying first made sense, but this, uh, personal attack on the mayor and this thing doesn't have anything to do with this prison.
Well, if you let me finish, pre-trial reform is essential and is an alternative to building massive prisons. Pre-trial reform lowers your prison population in an equitable way. Pre-trial reform would mean that if it was Governor Hammack who harassed someone and had to pay three hundred dollars but couldn't afford it, they're not gonna sit in prison for two months and waste our money. That's why it's relevant.
Is it equitable, is it equitable to the victims of the murders and the rapists and the child molesters?
Non-violent, non-violent release, my friend. No, no, murderers would not be released pre-trial. There's plenty of research for this. Non-violent offenders such as you, I, I think that's misdemeanor, non-violent, so you would be released.
All right, last thing I'm gonna say. Is there a difference between the county jail and a penitentiary?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, on to Mayor's report, but, um, I'm, I'm gonna take a few minutes to address some of this real quick. Um, first of all, lack of transparency. Um, Leslie, I get it. I think the world of you and Travis and I really feel for you, you know. If I was living out there, you know, I'd probably feel, you know, hey, I don't want a lot of traffic or lights like that, you know, hey, I, I feel you on that one. Um, but lack of transparency, uh, John, can you explain what a non-disclosure agreement is to these people, please?
Well.
We understand.
That makes me happy because I signed one before I ever found out about this, just like I've signed about four or five of them that I'm currently working on with other businesses and industries right now.
My issue with the non-disclosure agreement is you willingly.
I'll let you speak, Leslie. Can I speak?
Yeah, but if you wanna say like, we don't understand what's going on, we do.
Okay, so if they don't kind of understand, once I signed that binding agreement, if I broke that and came running to the news and everything and talked about it, our city could be sued and that could cost us taxpayer dollars in litigation. I signed a contract. It didn't happen.
You're out of order. You're out of order.
Let's move forward with the matter.
Y'all saw it too when you interrupted that man when he was standing up.
You're out of order, sir.
Hell.
All right, also, also, let me, I'm just trying to address these things. Um, that, that's why I didn't talk about it. It's why I'm not gonna talk about the handful of other NDAs I'm under with other industries and companies with you. Okay? I, I can't. I can't even talk about it with them, okay? So, if you wanna be mad at somebody, be mad at me, but I, I can't help that. Uh, this is a state-run facility. CoreCivic is not going to run this facility. The, the, the state is cheaper. They spend more money in maintenance of these old prisons that are overcrowded. It's cheaper for them to have companies like CoreCivic build them and lease them back to the Department of Corrections. It's a money thing to them, not, not meaning for-profit prison. This will be staffed by Jeff Dunn's people, the commissioner of the Department of Corrections of the state of Alabama. This is all the, the only thing CoreCivic has to do with is they're a real estate company. It's an investment. They build it and lease it back to them. You shake your head all you want to, Mr. Duckett.
Can I respond?
No, no.
That's what I figured.
All right. Let me, let me get my, let me get my time, okay? Um, this is, this right here is a state-run facility. This is going to be seven hundred plus jobs. It's gonna be thirty-seven percent more programming space for the people that go into prison and ninety-five percent of them will be released one day in the Department of Corrections. This gives them an opportunity to be habilitated so when they come back, maybe they can be a productive member of society, okay? Let, let, this is, I have not failed you. Who has failed you? Your long-term state senators and House of Representatives have been there multiple terms that didn't take care of the problem so the Department of Justice had to step in and put a consent decree on the state of Alabama. And I applaud Governor Kay Ivey for having the intestinal fortitude to make a decision that the state senate and the House of Representatives couldn't over the last several decades. It's way overdue. I'm sorry it's come here, but we're gonna take full economic advantage of it. And let me add something else. This right here, four thousand inmates near your home, I get that valid point. Uh, work release inmates near your homes, they're already in our restaurants. I see the van all the time dropping them off and picking them up. They're already here. They've been here for years. Questionable visitors to Talisi. I was one of those questionable visitors when I was a kid. So was my mother, so was my grandmother. I had a cousin die at Donaldson Prison last year. He had life without, he did a heinous crime and that's where he needed to be. So, are you calling me a questionable prisoner or are you talking about over eighty percent of the prison population being African-American? Are you saying you don't want these minority groups coming, the grandmothers and the mothers and the children, coming to visit their loved ones? Let's call a state a state. Is it discrimination? Is it racism or what is it?
I don't think you bring up race when no one else has.
Decreased pop, property values. I've done my research and I have a criminal justice degree, by the way, and I was taught in my class in criminal research under Dr. Snickla at the University of Alabama. Look him up if you don't know him already. And by academic scholars, there is no research that I could find, I'm not saying something that I could find, that says it adversely affects property values. Sure, you can go out and find you a blog where some college kid like you, an opinionated piece wrote, but from a scholar, bring me that and then we'll talk. And that's all I gotta say that we're gonna move to Mayor's report.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
No.
I just wonder if it's legal when it affects everyone around.
Jim Oliver is here to address the city council. Mr. Oliver? Now, if y'all wanna stay around for the city business inside the ceilings, we're about to do some of that.
This is a statement. It affects all.
How does the non-disclosure, if it's legal to affect everyone?
Look at that. Mr. Oliver, thank you. Mr. Mayor, is it okay if I take this off?
Yes, sir. You're more than six feet away.
Thank you. My name is Jim Oliver.
Just give us a second. All right, Mr. Oliver, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Jim Oliver. I'm a recent, uh, resident of Talisi area. I'm at nineteen fourteen Dark Corners Road. Weird name there, but, uh, that's it. Uh, I've been a, um, model airplane enthusiast for a long time since I was so high. And it gave my attention that you guys have an airport that's not being used for anything. And, um, I have some information here to support some of the things that I'd like you to know. I'm here to ask permission of the city to have a small group of adults, mature men, responsible citizens, uh, most of whom I've known for many years. Some are present at police officers and some are, myself have been a peace officer in the past, a corporate pilot in the past, so I have some feeling for aviation and what, what that involves. Uh, so anyway, we'd like to ask the city for permission to use the Talisi Airport to fly model airplanes. I'll do radio control models as well as control line models. I don't think I can ask you questions about any of those. I've spoken with Mr. Harwick, who has the lease on the hangar complex as I understand it. I've actually met with him in person and he, uh, he is in favor of us doing this. I actually met his stepson, Ryan Meadows, who, uh, he's, uh, asked me if I could teach him how to fly radar control models. And I said, yes. And actually, one of your police officers happened to be there one day when I was there. Got to use my Get Outta Dale Free card, Mayor.
Wish I would have had one of those. That'd take three hundred dollars to do.
And, uh, and he said he'd like to learn to fly radio control models. I just spoke with Mr. Harwick this evening and, uh, told him that we, if the city would give us opportunity to use that property, we would, uh, like to use Sky Tiger Aviation Model Airplane Club as the name of our organization. Now, I have here, uh, for your study, a liability insurance program for site owners. I have several copies. I've maybe not enough to go around, uh, but, in short, the Academy of Model Aviation, Model Aeronautics, which I've known for many years, uh, has an insurance program for site owners. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, should I hand these to you?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is actually some, some copies of some.
Yeah, I have, uh, the safety handbook manual. Is that what you, uh?
Well, this is a little bit different, I think.
Liability insurance?
Yeah, liability.
Yeah, I have that. You have a copy for everyone?
I have several copies. You can pass those out. I may not go. I may not be quite enough, but, uh, I have some more copies of that safety handbook as well as the safety code, uh, which you can pass out if you'd like to. And, in short, what the Academy of Model Aeronautics does for a recognized club, uh, is provide two and a half million dollars of liability coverage for the site owner for a single incident. Uh, and, so that would be two and a half million dollars for each incident that occurred with a maximum of five million dollars. You guys could take, take a look at that and see what you think of that. Um, I'll be pleased to try to answer questions if you have.
I'd just say, uh, John Smith, where, oh, you still there?
I'm here, yes, sir.
Okay. Just as far as the liability and everything, I think it, you know, if attorney looks up, that's the main thing. If there's any problem with the liability, liability issue regarding the city, that would be, that's the first thing that comes to my mind. It sounds like you're addressing a lot of this, but we'd like for Mr. Smith, our attorney, to make sure that the city be okay if something happened, you know, that sort of thing.
Absolutely, and I understand that. And each one of the members, um, would be willing to sign an indemnification for the city. Uh, we, we don't wanna hurt anybody and we don't wanna damage any property. We break toy airplanes every now and then, but we don't do it hurting people. We do it with flying them to the ground. And there's lots of area out there, so it'd be a really safe place for us to operate. And another thing that I'd like you guys to know is that I will personally know each one of these individuals. Many of them I've known for thirty years. Uh, and I intend at this point to maintain a rather small group. Um, and each member would be bound by the information in the Code of Ethics, the Code of Safety Code, the Safety Handbook, by all the rules and regulations that the Academy of Model Aeronautics imposes on, on model flies, who are members of that organization.
Mr. Oliver, would we have to purchase this insurance?
No.
Okay.
It's provided by the Academy of Model Aeronautics.
Okay. So, no cost to us?
No cost to you.
And what happens if that, in the future, property is developed?
Well, you can just tell us, hey, it's over.
Okay.
There wouldn't be any lease signed unless you wanted, you know, some, some sort of legal, buying formation like that.
John, from a legal standpoint, uh, he has that where if something happened, you know, the city's in demand.
Yeah, it, it, as long as, here's what I would, and I'd need to see your agreements to understand, but here's what I would recommend to the council, is that whatever insurance you had, name the city as an additional insured, uh, and, and there be some sort of indemnity agreement or, or release and hold harmless signed by any person who comes out there.
Yes.
Uh, so that, so that the city, so that the city, if something went wrong and some sort of action was taken, then the city would be fully covered and released as much as possible by anybody out there. So, I mean, and I, and I think that can be accomplished. I, I don't think this is out of the ordinary. It happens, but, uh, I just need to look at the agreements first to be able to say that.
Uh, you can take a look at that, uh, liability statement.
Yes, sir.
That might be good.
Yeah.
And, and we would be willing to sign the indemnification to individual.
Sure.
We could just, well, the one's liability insurance program for site owners.
Yes, sir.
Is that it?
That's it, yes, sir.
Okay.
Here's their handbook.
Yeah, I'll take that, but I'll, I'll look over there and I'll, I'll have a, I should have an answer.
Have you discussed with Mr. Harwick that everything that, to use his area?
Yeah, actually, uh, his stepson, Ryan Meadows, uh, has keys to the hangar complex and he was kind enough to take me through the hangar complex. I mean, take a look at a lot of the models that Mr. Harwick has there hanging on the wall inside the hangar.
Yep.
Uh, and, uh, Mr. Meadows, Ryan, I said, he'd sure love to see those models flying. And, uh, he wanted to, he wanted me to teach him how to fly those models. I said, well, those World War II scale models like that, they'll, they'll eat your lunch.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so he started out with a very simple, slow-flying, simple control trainer. And one of the things I, I might mention, uh, uh, when I was, when I was in the, uh, Beulah, Alabama area, I met with the principal of the Beulah High School, Adam Johnson, I think his name is, and he gave me permission to fly control line models on one of their fields. And what I told him was that, when I was in high school, when I, when I moved into the Bruton, Alabama area, I was, I think, in the tenth grade, and I was the only guy in the school that played with toy airplanes, built models. And as a result of some of the other students' exposure to model airplanes, they got involved with it. Well, actually, several of those guys went on to be aeronautical engineers, uh, working for JPL, the propulsion lab, and Boeing. And I myself went to go to the Institute of Technology in the early sixties. It's no longer any existence, but, and got in an aeronautical engineering group. Uh, so, I'd be willing to work with students from the high school who, who had an interest in doing something other than playing video games. Uh, that would be something that I would, I would thoroughly enjoy doing. Most kids nowadays don't wanna take the time to build things and build critical thinking skills. And doing the kind of stuff that I'm talking about, doing it absolutely develops that, that talent, that ability, so.
Well, I think pending, um, John's review of the documents and the insurance stuff, I think that this sounds like a good idea.
All right.
Any problems? I don't think we need a formal motion, do we?
Do we need to make a formal motion?
No, I don't, I, I'm just waiting for the truck to get back. No, I don't think so. Uh, there's no need to do anything. Let me just look at that and, and once I've gotten back, then I think, you know, it would be a matter of, uh, the council agreeing that his group could use the old airport facility for model airplane meetings.
Okay.
So, John, do you think that, uh, for our December eighth meeting, if we had it on the agenda, uh, is that enough time for you to review that?
I think so, Mayor, yes.
Will we put that on the agenda for December the eighth, just from a formal vote after he looks at everything?
And if there's any questions come up, I'd be pleased to try to answer those. I do have, uh, at my disposal, an associate vice president who lives near Selma, uh, who was otherwise engaged tonight and couldn't make it to this meeting. Uh, but he is, uh, he's a, a resource for information if they need that and also, of course, the guys at the Home Office that runs it.
Yeah.
Uh, actually, I haven't got through the magazine today and I haven't had a chance to read it, but I'd be glad to look here if you guys wanna just pass around, take a look at it.
Yeah, sure.
And I'll read and need it back. I'll get a look.
All right, thank you, sir.
But it kinda gives you an idea about what some of the stuff that we'll be doing looks like.
Oh, man.
Uh, I've been involved in competition flying for several years as well and, you know, that's kinda interesting. And we hadn't really talked about doing competitions at this site. I'd have to give an okay for you guys to do that, but that would bring people in, uh, to rent motel rooms and buy some meals and whatnot.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, well, yep, thank you. Well, uh, I'll let you know if. Yep, well, yep, thank you, well, uh, I'll let you know something, uh, you wanna call me, uh, December the seventh, and I, I should have something before then, and be on the agenda the eighth, uh, for the council meeting that night.
I'll do that, you said the second.
Yeah, so just call me on that Monday, and then December eighth, the council meeting.
Okay, so what, what time would be better for you to hear?
Wendy, you just talk to Wendy, and I'll call you direct, I'm in and out, I don't know, I'll get, I'll get back with you, though.
Alright, is there any need for me to hang around?
No, sir.
Alright, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Yes, thank you. Alright, next on Mayor's report is Southern Smokehouse Barbecue, um, this came to me after the agenda was already set out, uh, what that is. Uh, this is, if you've seen them, they have the barbecue truck, uh, food truck over here at the First United, uh, with, East House United, that's just, I'm sorry. Uh, they've been over there, uh, they've bought a business license, and they said that they have been paying taxes to the City of Talisi. Like, 'cause I asked them, I was like, do you have a business license, do you pay sales tax? And I went down and checked with Tony, uh, in, in City Hall today, and they do have a business license, uh, they do, uh, it showed up on our Avenue website about sales tax, did you ever hear from the other one?
I have not, I mean, I've checked my email, and I have not heard from her.
It shows up, that, that on our thing with, with their company, but when we try to click on it and go to it, it's, it's kinda kicking us out. So, I, I can't tell you for sure that they're paying sales tax tonight, I, I wanna say they probably are, it showed up on there, uh, but I, I don't know for certain, I don't know. Uh, next thing is, um, they've got this letter that covers them with insurance, a certificate of liability insurance, while they're in the City of Talisi. This is their request, they want to know if they could set up a direct center, uh, Mooney D. Mail, he says, thank you for taking the time to call me back the other day, speaking with me about the possibility of setting my food trailer up at the Parks and Recreation Building. As per your request, I am including the City of Talisi on my liability coverage, which is attached in this email. We currently have a business license with the city and have, uh, been paying taxes for several months now. Our plan would be to either set up on Saturdays or Wednesdays each week at this location. As I mentioned in our conversation earlier, I will be out of town the day of the council meeting, but if you have any further questions, please call me, and leave the phone number here. So, what do y'all think, setting up at the, on City Drive?
We need to look at it from a standpoint of, okay, um, who else is gonna wanna set up on City Drive?
Jack, who's the president, I think?
Uh, we need to promote one business over another, we're going out of the wrong road about starting doing that.
Okay.
I mean, I'd like to stand on the other side.
Yeah.
Actually, because of President, I mean, I wanna get started on that. I'm sure there's plenty of other prior.
Everybody, everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll call, I'll call them, uh, listen, anyone got anything different than that? Okay, alright. Woo, okay, uh, be more transparent, I thought I've been as transparent as possible, being on radio shows every week, and Facebook page, and, and my mayor reports are more lengthy than I am, on the agenda mostly, uh, I'll take it one step further. I'm gonna, I bought some equipment, the City of Talisi, I should say, bought some equipment, uh, spent about, what, two hundred fifty, three hundred dollars on a, um, a microphone and a boom, and, uh, I'm gonna hook it up to the laptop, and I'm gonna, Jordan, you can start helping me produce this, and it's gonna be a podcast called Talisi Talk, and I can share it to my Facebook page, we're gonna fix it wherever you got the podcast app, or whatever, you can click on it. Uh, now, if it takes off and we start getting a lot of views and people, uh, you know, a lot of viewers and stuff, and people subscribe to it, I cannot profit off this, so we need to take that money and funnel it into a separate account designated for next wire usage, whether it be recreation, economic development, uh, beautification, whatever, um, you know, I mean, I imagine, eventually, I'll probably get some sponsorships from some of the local restaurants and things like that, um, or, you know, if we get so many subscribers, you know, nationwide, if it takes off, I don't know about how it'd be anything, but us talking, but what I wanna do is be transparent and tell people what's going on in the city, and also have like a guest speaker, like, I've got Kwat Nol today to tell us about the schools, or I've got, uh, Crystal from the owner of Southern Girls, um, Downtown, or Stephen Webster from Tiger Ball, come in, and I want it to be something where we talk about the infrastructure, economic development, what's going on in Talisi, what's on the horizon, what we're currently working on, and helping from other, uh, local businesses within Talisi. Uh, this is something I wanna do, and I hope I have you blessed on that. If not, I'll pay the city back the two hundred fifty dollars and do my thing, keep all the money, so.
I'll take anything, I'll take up from the city, uh, if that. That's like, uh, oh, you're proud, uh, go ahead.
Nothing, what, what do y'all, uh?
Honestly, I think it's, we've, we've put a lot of money towards, a lot of money towards, um, infrastructure, I think that there's a lot of things in topic that we can use this first thing, so let's call for your attention.
What do y'all think?
Oh, I told everybody.
Okay, anybody?
You have a change, come on, the best, if you want.
As long as my schedule allows, now, the great thing about a podcast, I can record it anytime, and let Jordan have a little music to it, make it look professional, edit it, and put it out there. It's just so much misinformation, like, the people that were here to buy, uh, they had, some of them had valid points and, and great concerns, but a lot, a lot of them do not have the information. There's only so much I can do, no offense, for, I'm on your radio show, with you and Brother Rick, or Lamar, or Michael Butler, I don't control it there. I got callers calling in, I'm on a, a tight schedule, I don't get to cover everything I don't wanna cover, this is the way for me to be transparent, as Miss Leslie Osborne said, and I can get the information out there, all that I'm legally allowed to say. Now, we just went in executive session, and I told you about several NDAs that I'm under now, you know, I, I, I told you I was under them, I didn't really give you any meat and bones about it, you know, because I'm not allowed to. Yeah, so, and I want it to be as transparent as possible, and if we can get some sponsorships, not to take anything from WACQ or WTS, but if anybody wants to, it'd be basically like a charitable donation, I get to mention the Twelve Twenty Cafe, or Urban Hails, or what a, you know, Tiger Ball, you know, I mean, if, you know, and then it goes into a pot, John, do we legally do this, and then it goes, does they can write a, a, a check to the, the City of Talisi, or to go to a special account, or they need to write to, like, CDC, the New Development Corporation, a bottle one C three, to kinda hold the money for us, or?
Mayor, I, I don't, I don't see, let, let me say this, uh, you know, the CDC, there, there are things that the CDC can do that the city can't do. Uh, I mean, we've, we've explored that and talked about that before, but there's nothing that prevents money being given directly to the city dedicated to a special account or a special use, but if you do that, you know, you gotta keep up with it, uh, how it's used. I don't know, you know, I, I don't know if there is a benefit to using the CDC as opposed to using the city itself. I will say this, if the city, though, has the money, the city completely controls what it chooses.
I like that idea.
Sounds good.
Alright, well, I'm on, I know everybody's here. Um, no holiday market, senior center Christmas party has been canceled due to COVID, no holiday market before, because of COVID, and no Christmas lighting because of COVID, a lot of humbug, but we gotta think about the mask order, uh, the safer at home order, the things that the governor's talking about, so, and I don't wanna have any of these things that, you know, a lot of kids or senior citizens could get, um, placed real close together and can catch and spread this virus. Um, let's see, there will be a Christmas parade, uh, it'll be ten o'clock on December fifth, how do you guys want to participate in this? Do you, do you want us to drive a model float, wear a mask, I don't know if we can get six feet apart on the thing, throw out candy, do not throw out candy, I mean, just what's your thoughts on it?
I need to, uh, clear.
Walk, walk without candy, can everybody physically walk, or can we see if we can?
Oh, no, no, I'm gonna ride on the float, and I wanna throw candy.
Ride on the float and throw candy?
So, is it half and half?
Uh?
Half and half. And then if someone needs to take a break, they can hop on and, and walk on it.
Okay.
I'll be working, so.
Alright, we'll work it out, but we're gonna, if you wanna participate, let me know, so I can make arrangements. We got one, one market, you want to go participate, participate, participate?
Oh, I know.
Alright, I'm bored, do you ever bring your basket, or?
Yeah, do that.
Alright, now, I know you're, I know everybody's tired, and I'm ready, I wanna get out of the suit, I'll have it on some six thirty this morning, so, I'll throw the, move fast. CDVG grant for demolition of houses, we're in the process of finalizing the light of entry, easement type work and contractor specifications. Brad Davis is confirming owner lien holder addresses for the first round of properties, and we anticipate mailing out and/or personally contacting owners for permission after the Thanksgiving holiday. Wally Derisle's project is gonna put it out for bid on December second, twenty twenty, for three weeks. Bid opening date, Thursday, January the seventh, at two P M. That's in Ward Two. Uh, Talisi Tap Grant, this is for downtown, along with a lot of other work, we're gonna be doing on infrastructure and roads and things like that. We're gonna put this out for bid, December the ninth, twenty twenty, we need, uh, local paper for three weeks, and, uh, one-time mistake, a lot of paper due to the amount estimated. Uh, pre-bid meeting, January the seventh, at three P M, and bid opening will be January fourteenth, at three P M. And Louie will be getting with me, uh, on advertising, if you need.
I heard from him today, we, we need to.
Lady List Station Preconstruction Meeting, December the seventeenth, at two P M, constructions commence mid-January, that's in your Ward, Daniel, Ward Three. And that's all I have for Mayor's reports, uh, all of the council reports, Ward One?
No report.
Ward Two?
I'm excited, I'm gonna try to drive, then, uh, try to next one.
Okay, Ward Three?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Ward Four?
No report.
Ward Five?
Um, Happy Thanksgiving.
Ward Six?
No report.
Ward Seven?
No report.
Motion to adjourn.
Six.
I have a motion to adjourn in a second, I'll just say, I.
Happy Thanksgiving.